I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
She talks so well.
Trying to get my ducks in a row up here. Call to order, the Vermillion County Council meeting for August 11th. You please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. First up, we have Rockville, Mr. Costello.
Here.
Mr. Somerville.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. James and Preston. Ms. Furry.
Here.
Mr. Bose.
Here.
And Mr. Weers, not with us tonight. First up, we have approval of minutes from our July 14th, 2025 meeting.
Only question I have is, I think it's item eight, where it says that Vermillion County Comp Time Report was reviewed and that it advised that I would like to see two added lines to the report, one showing, quote, "paid up today", unquote, and the second, "Highway paid out, Comp Time", quote, unquote. And I don't, I'll have to look at that.
I think I asked about adding the lines, and then somebody else commented about there was more overtime lines than just the Commissioner's Court. There was also Highway. I don't exactly remember who said that. If we go back, maybe listen to it, clarify that to make sure.
Because I, yeah, I'm pretty sure I didn't ask to have anything added to it.
Yeah, I think I added.
And if I do.
And then I don't remember who told, mentioned them, to make sure we're all on it. I think we told them, might be three. We can table those if we need to until everything gets that fixed, just to make sure.
So we have tabled the whole, all the minutes?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that or just table it?
Did you have a preference?
I would just approve it subject to that. I'll check.
Clarifying that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me do that one. Is there anything else on the minutes? We can approve it, it's subject to the clarification of item number eight. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Bose, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve the Vermillion County Council meeting minutes from July 14th, 2025. Approval is subject to the clarification of item number eight. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, take no. We do have a few additional appropriations this evening. The first one is from the Vermillion County Health Department, it's for their PIFR grant, the emergency preparedness grant. This is due in part that it is a, it runs mid-year to mid-year, so we need to reapprove it for basically six months of this year and then do it again for six months next year. This is for the rest of the year. The additional appropriation has multiple lines totaling $20,000, and it is for their preparedness grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the additional appropriation for $20,000 for the emergency preparedness grant.
I'll second. I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Ms. Brown. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, state no. Appropriations approved. Yeah, this is essentially like the rest of the budget, it's not really asking for more money. They also have a second one from the Health Fund. This is for an increase in the insurance. They have an employee go from, to employee to family, so they need to increase. And the total amount of $18,937.50 for group insurance in perf.
This was increases for this year?
Yes. Basically, someone switched their plan coverage, so we increase on that spot.
Is that separate from the other insurance?
Yeah, they have a few positions that they pay out of their funds, so that way it is separate from the rest of the health insurance in the Commissioner's Court.
I'll make a motion for the additional appropriation for $18,937.50 for the Health Fund 1159, for the group and the perf insurance.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Bose, to approve the additional appropriation of the Vermillion County Health Department Health Fund, number 1159, in the amount of $18,937.50. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, take no. Appropriation is approved. The last additional appropriation we had this evening is from Commissioner's Court. There, we need to add more money into the overtime. They're asking for a $10,000, because the amount that has been appropriated for this year has already been paid out.
What was that amount? My booklet just fell out here.
Oh. I believe we had $10,000 in Commissioner's Court, and then we're adding another $10,000.
Will that take it to the end of the year? I think a lot of overtime.
We always have a period a lot, it's whether or not it gets paid out sometimes, but we've had a lot paid out this year to where.
So that was something that I was wanting to bring in. So if a person accumulates Comp Time, they can, at any point in time can determine, I'd rather just go ahead and take money for that entire amount, because that seems.
They, the department head has to approve it being paid out, and then if it gets over their max amount, it is supposed to automatically be paid out.
Yeah. But the department doesn't have overtime. I mean, it's the overtime amounts in the Commissioner's budget for every employee. Which would make more sense to me to have overtime in each department, and then at each point in time when a person earns extra, or works extra hours beyond 40 hours, or whatever, that they would select where they want paid out overtime, or convert that, or to accept Comp Time, and make the decision then, that way it can be tracked better, instead of saying, well, I've got 100 X, 150 hours of Comp Time, I go ahead and take it now. Because if you get, you know, if you don't keep track of it all at once, you could have six or seven departments all at once have that occur, and then you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the money in the budget.
I think most of us together, like, we stated earlier, Highway's separate. I think there was somebody else who.
But even still, they don't, they don't select whether, like, you know, it is for Highway, for example, if they work two, three days in a row, plow and snow, put Comp Time, or just put overtime down, and then later, six months later, say, I'll go ahead and take pay for that.
Oh, you're saying like, declare it when they.
I'm saying they should say, I'll take the overtime now, and then you're keeping track of it, and on a moment-by-moment basis, instead of all at once. That's how the state does it, and that's how a lot of other counties do it. You have to select whether you want paid, or you want Comp Time on that time card for that pay period.
That's something we could talk with the Commissioners about.
It's not, it's, you know, up to the Commissioners or whatever, but then the other thing was, you know, each department had, I mean, a department head wouldn't necessarily know how much is in the Commissioner's budget, would they? Or would it be there due diligence to check before they approve it, or?
They wouldn't necessarily know unless they can probably ask the Auditorial Office.
Right, but if it was in their own budget, if they had overtime in their own budget for their own employees, and they had some sort of a knowledge of what they would expect for the year, and put that in the budget, then they could monitor that themselves.
That's something we can look at, this budget hearings in September, look at putting it maybe individually, so that way they can monitor. Definitely a possibility.
You know it would work, it just depends on whether, you know, everyone would want to do that or not.
Yeah. Any other questions about that?
Over.
Sorry for being late.
Just noticed you walked in.
For some reason, I thought it was Tuesday. It's at the Commissioner's meeting, I guess.
Happens when you're retired.
Yeah.
Welcome to the meeting.
Appreciate that.
I would make a motion to approve the request for additional appropriation of the County General for overtime in the amount of $10,000.
I have a motion for Mr. Costello, a second for Mrs. Furry, to approve an additional $10,000 from the General Fund to the Commissioner's Court, on item for overtime. Any further discussion?
Yes. I apologize for being late. I would like to make a point that, and I've said it before, overtime needs to be managed much better. I don't know how we can do it, because I, I don't work here, but I know for 40 years, I managed my budget, and that overtime, mandatory 24-hour coverage, weekends, unexpected outages, and I lived within my budget. I really expect, moving forward in the future years, our office holders will have to figure out how to do it, because money doesn't ruin trees in this county, and we cannot keep paying overtime like I see for the last several years since I've been on this council. Got to figure out how to do it, and money's going to get tight, and somewhere along the line, we got to say no, or we got to get creative. That's all I really have to say.
Any other thoughts?
One thing that would help is if the county employees started working an eight-hour day before they started paying for overtime. That would cut out a lot of that.
It's doable, not in all cases, but it's doable. And I'm not putting the whole ownership on the office holders. We, as a council, have to figure out how to do it too, and whether we budget for overtime, so many hours, then that's all we budget, then afterwards, we got to figure out how to do this better, because I see us going down the wrong path. Am I correct that we really don't budget overtime hours?
Yeah, that's what I was mentioning a few minutes ago.
Okay.
The state has, when they create their budgets annually, their budget, I don't know if it's called a committee or what it's called. They have an office, I think, that manages all that, but they, their office holders or departments, like NDOD or State Police, whoever it may be, whatever state it is, I think they are required to submit anticipated overtime. They expect they'll have it, they have, you know, maybe some history, they know what they usually do every year, and so that gets approved, and then they're free to manage that throughout the year, and if they exceed that, then they have to go back to this budget group or committee and request more, but there's, it's a process, it's not just, and I think there's some time, like, if you run out of money for that, there's like a time period that you have to request it, you can't keep approving it in the meantime, except for, I think, emergencies, or like, public safety, or something like that, they can keep going, excuse me, but maybe something like that, maybe each office would submit some sort of, we anticipate we'll have 100 hours of overtime this year, because we know we've got all this stuff we're going to be doing, and.
Right.
We don't have the manpower to cover that.
Some of it can be planned, I think.
Hopefully, yeah, and then maybe each office could have a budget for that. And if it doesn't get used, say, by the end of the year, I suppose, it would just revert it back to General Fund or something like that. But it would take a while before you'd have a track record, you know, you might be way off the first couple of years, but then later, you'd get better at it, or a department would get better at knowing what they use. Like Highway, for example, they know that on average every year, they need X many hours for.
Exactly.
Storms and whatnot. Of course, every year's different, and there will be, you know, times when you don't have enough, so that's what this is for.
So it's, I mean, there's going to be a cooperative effort here to try to wrap our arms around this, but.
Yeah, I think we could probably do something.
I think.
I don't know what the process is, I don't know if it'd be perfect or not, we got to start somewhere, I think it'd be better than this.
Right.
Than just paying out additionals all the time, so it's not really a plan.
Between the Commissioners and the office holders and the council, we've got to develop and improve our communications on all expenditures.
Where does that start, anyway? Who would, is that a Commissioner issue as far as determining?
I think it's like, what came first, the chicken or the egg, like, financial side or that side? I mean, it just had to be a discussion to see if we can create a better system for it.
I think we need to really discuss it more, even in this year's budget appropriations for 2026.
Maybe department heads would have a good idea of what, maybe they got a better idea now, I don't know.
All right, I do have a motion, a motion for Mr. Costello, a second for Mrs. Furry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. The $10,000 additional overtime is approved. That was the last additional. We do have some transfers this evening. The first in your packet is for the Commissioner's Court. They are asking to transfer $40,000 from Highway Engineer's salary line to the Professional Services line. They are needing to hire some engineering work done for the Highway Department, so they are asking for that transfer. It will need voted on.
Is that in the budget for employee, if desired at some point?
That was because they were, at one time, talking to Park County to try to collaboratively, like, work together to hire somebody, and it was left in there, but.
Right, so that would be, I think the state will pay half the salary, I'm not talking about two counties, but say just one county, and just the state covers half.
At one point, I think it was the $40,000.
Up to $40,000, I'm sorry. So it could be, it could be half, if salary's the right amount, but they would cover up to 40, so if each county, well, I guess the salary was never really talked about a whole lot, but it was, they were hoping it would be higher than, say, 80, maybe. But anyway, that's where that's from. I don't know if that's still, RJ, do you, I guess I could ask Mr. Commissioner Donovan the question?
I was thinking it was 20, but I could be wrong. I thought.
They'll do 40. The state will cover up to 40, so you could do 80,000 if you have 40. We have 40, they have 40, yeah, and there's, there's reasons they'll do that, but are you familiar with this, Mr. Costello?
Yeah, this was last year, and actually even the year before that. Park County had indicated that at one time, they would share one with us, but as time progressed, they weren't interested in doing that. And when the previous board of Commissioners were here, I think the closest we found someone to work for was maybe 110,000. Just most recently, we spoke into some people, and they wouldn't leave the private industry for less than 120,000. So the Commissioners decided that, you know, we can't get one high fat 40,000, and with the restructure of the Highway Department, we believe that 40,000 can be used for some engineering services to help with some offset costs. And as I spoke into, I don't know if it was Neil or Ashley, I don't anticipate we'll use that entire 40,000, that's a not-to-exceed amount. We approved a contract with RQAW Tuesday night pending this transfer approved, and that's a not-to-exceed amount of 40,000. They've got it all itemized out, you know, your engineers might be $200 an hour, surveying might be $100 an hour, so we don't anticipate using anywhere near that, and this isn't a blank check to RQAW, that will have to be approved.
So would this be if the Highway Department said, hey, we need you to determine the size of culvert that we need, and could you please calculate that?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and that's what we talked about, because the Highway Department, I mean, when you replace a culvert, you can put the same size in, but the problem is, was that size put incorrectly 60 years ago? We don't know. So on some roads, where we do have that concern, we would use this 40,000 to pay for that engineering to come out and look at that.
Just as a side note, like, some of the pipe culler supply companies will calculate those.
Yeah, there's a couple, oh shoot, E3 Bridge does a pretty good job, but again, some of that stuff isn't engineered stamp. I mean, some of them do it in-house, so if you want to be for sure, you have to hire somebody to.
Yeah, you don't want to size every culvert with a PE, because it'll get real expensive.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure.
Critical stuff, it's larger, yeah, sure, okay. I just want to see if that's what, or if, do you have any known needs right now, or is it just an in case?
I think it's more of just an in case, so we don't have to come back in case of an emergency, because I think our budget, you know, Mike and Kylie prepared that, but we don't have any other flying eyes to take that out of.
Sounds reasonable, they'll probably need it, and they don't have the staff right now, so.
Yeah, and like I said, it's not a blank check, it could be approved by TIA and the Highway Department, so you don't have to worry about that 40,000 being expended in the next four months.
Are we going to put this in the budget in the Highway for the next year?
We, I talked to Ashley about that, you know, I think depending on what we use in the next few months, I think it would probably be cut down to maybe 20,000 or something, we could just see what projects we need, because I don't anticipate a, I mean, Neil knows better than I, but I mean, even a big critical project, maybe what, 5,000, 10,000, maybe?
I don't know.
It just depends on the size, so I mean, I'd rather have it just in case.
It goes to the doctor or something, you have no idea.
You have no idea what a doctor will do. So yeah, it's more just kind of a just-in-case, and it's not to exceed, so.
But I, if we don't put that in like a salary position for like the county engineer or something in the future, then that'll kind of, if that ever comes up, that would require an additional or something at some point, but if there's nothing on the horizon, there's no point in having.
Unfortunately, I think the private industry has really raised that salary for engineers, so unless you get someone that's just retired, and then even at that, they only want to give you a couple of years, you know, maybe.
One of the issues is that, being a perf county, is that if some, like, you, you think maybe, well, I could hire someone who's retired, but they can't, because once, you know, with perf and everything, it's, they're not, they have to remain a full-time employee and stuff, so they can't really be retired and work this also, so that's not good.
Absolutely, we've been talking.
Some counties can do that, but not, there's only like a couple of counties that actually do that, but we're not ones.
Any other questions?
This firm would do everything that an engineer would do for a county?
Say it again.
This engineering firm would do everything that the engineer would do for a county?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean.
They could.
They could, yeah, I mean, we could ask them to do pretty much anything. I mean, RQAW and Wolfert were the two companies that put in for it, and they left it pretty open-ended, that even if, you know, the county needed something else than outside of the Highway, they'd be willing to do that.
A county engineer could do.
Essentially, this is for the Highway Department.
Sure. Virtually anything, like the Commissioners or whoever, like, if they said, hey, manage this grand.
Yeah.
Then a county engineer would do that, or if they said, hey, you know, we're, develop this plan for this, that, or the other, but they'll do whatever you ask them to do, but it'll get real expensive if you have to do everything.
Yeah.
You can do everything for 20,000 a year?
No, not a year.
Yeah, I don't think a year, because it's going to be, you know, per base of some way you're getting charged, so I mean, if we hand them two or three projects for the year, you might get up to 15,000, 20,000, we just don't know. That's why for the rest of this year, we can see how it plays out, and then maybe budget it a little bit less for next year.
You know what my next question is?
What's that?
Why in the world would we ever hire an engineer for 80 to 120,000, and we can do the same thing for 20 to 40,000?
I agree with you, Ken, I agree with you.
Because you'd make a county engineer do $200,000 worth of work, that's right.
If you can get one for 80 to 100, I mean, yeah, if you could, yeah.
Well, yeah, even more, but you're saying this firm would do the same thing.
Well, they can, yeah, and like I said, it's on an order basis, so you can track it very easily.
They can do anything that a county engineer will, but they're not going to do everything that a county engineer could. You wouldn't have enough money for it.
What about necessary?
Huh?
What about everything that's necessary?
Depends, do you want the county engineer to manage the Highway budget or something like that? Do you want him to oversee community crossing grants, rate roads, I mean, there's a million, oversee the bridge inspection program? You're not going to have them do that, so.
I don't think we need one, to my point.
Yeah, I think we could get by with having a Professional Services line item, but if you gave us the 40,000, we could budget or manage it the rest of this year and see what we need, and then maybe for next year, give us a little bit of money in that.
We're in a small group, it does not happen. Not that it's, not that you're wrong, but I'm just saying.
We need to figure out things to cut spending, not increase spending.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
RJ, so we've gone out and solicited to two, three engineering firms.
Yep.
Okay, and we've selected the one that we felt like.
RQAW, yep.
Okay.
This sounds great.
Yeah, and like I said, we're not going to use it, like I said arbitrarily, we're only going to need it for, you know, projects we need, but again, if we can get something done for $1,000, $1,500 versus paying someone to fit, and you know, all that stuff, so. Any other questions? I'm going to sit up here just in case you need me.
Thank you.
Stay right there.
This transfer does require a vote for approval.
I'll make a motion to transfer the $40,000 from Highway Engineer out of the Commissioner's Court into Professional Services in the same Commissioner's Court.
I'll say it then.
I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Somerville, for the transfer of $40,000 from Highway Engineer to Professional Services, County General, Commissioner's Court. All those, is there any further discussion?
Can we get an update on, throughout the year, or the rest of the balance of this year, on how much we actually spend out of this?
Oh, for sure, yeah, absolutely.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Transfer is approved. Next, transfer also requires a vote this evening, it is for the Parks Department. Their General Fund account, and they are asking to transfer $2,000 from other capital outlays into Garage and Motor Supplies to cover the garage and motor purchases and repairs. And there's a portion, an invoice on what they owe in the back.
All those in favor? I have $7,000.
$7,000?
Well, originally it was 5,400, but they cut it down to 2.
Yeah.
Oh, it's 2.
It's a 2.
The way, it looks like it's 7 on the.
Oh, it's on the line, it's 2,000.
Motion approved. I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Somerville, a second for Mr. Bose, to approve a $2,000 transfer from the Parks Department, their General Fund account, from other capital outlays to Garage and Motor Supplies. Any further discussion?
Is this done in Rockville? Location is at Rockville?
Yes.
Okay, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, take no, transfer is approved. And then we have the next transfer, West Central Indiana Public Defender's Office, it is reporting only, they're transferring four thousand from witness fees to transcripts. Any questions on that one? Next transfer is also reporting only, auditor is transferring a thousand dollars from official records to office supplies. The next reporting only is the parks department, again, a hundred dollars from office applies to supplies. The next one is the highway, motor vehicle highway account, eleven seventy-six. Technically, the transfer is from one series to the same series, however, it has to deal with salaries, so I would like to approve this one, so everyone could acknowledge that the transfer did happen. Also, if it is approved, then we will need to update the salary resolution for it as well.
Does one have to happen before the other?
Typically, we do like the budget part, to know that it's there to do this, because it's no point in doing the salary resolution if there's no money to do it.
Right.
So, we don't have a salary resolution to approve tonight, so what it does is that the superintendent is no longer there, and so they're asking to take some of the money from the superintendent line, and then distribute three thousand to the administrative assistant, and then four thousand each to each highway foreman. And that would be prorated for the rest of the year, for the, for the remaining, I think there's ten pays left. Did I say that correctly, that you're prorating it?
Yeah, yeah, I think, Billy's got it wrote down, I think.
So you won't actually need that whole amount then?
No, the four thousand, I believe, will be prorated for the entire year, and they're only going to get that difference of that four thousand of the last remaining pays, since they weren't doing those duties prior to now, if that makes sense.
Okay. So basically, you add that to their whole year salary rate, and then we'll just divide.
And then you'll divide it up and see the difference, and then we get it from the remaining ten pays.
Okay.
Same with the administrator.
Since we don't have a salary resolution to approve tonight, we may have to adjust that slightly, just so it encompasses the previous due, either backpay them, or figure it over eight pays, or whatever they would have gotten.
Sure.
We can make it work out for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So this, this will, this assumes moving forward that a single superintendent and three assistant foremen are not present anyway, it's just three foremen, which we talked about.
The administrator. Yeah, I talked to you a little bit about it, and Ashley, the commissioners would like, if this would work out, the salary would be the same for those four employees with these raises. And for twenty twenty-six budget, during budget hearings, as long as this works out, we'd like to keep that salary the same moving into twenty twenty-six, so. Yeah, and Neil had talked, and we had discussed, uh, board of directors, some type of direction at the highway department, where the administrator oversees it, or the three highway foremen would have a unofficial board, and the commissioners wouldn't oversee the, well, essentially, the commissioners oversee it, but there will be no day-to-day stuff, just like how the superintendent overseeing it. And the budget won't be split up, this will be one highway budget, like it's been done for the last several years, so. So in essence, you'll be returning back to the county, I don't know if you add all the benefits into fifty, sixty thousand dollars back, so, but the budget was submitted with the superintendent position, but we can discuss that at budget hearings, though.
Adjust that if you.
Sure.
I think that if, if the foreman, if there's like an unofficial board of directors that manage, you know, or, I don't have any doubts that everyone there can do the work, day-to-day work that's got to be done, they know what to do. Then there's always the question of decision-making, which has to be done, so if you have a, an unofficial board of three, then they would make decisions on budgeting, hiring, purchases, decisions on planning for the next year, for paving, whatnot.
Yep.
So that's kind of decisions that they're getting paid extra to accomplish, but they have, I mean, they, at the same time, that's got to be written in the job description.
Yeah, and those, uh, we plan on having those done by this Friday, we've got a description of like the board of directors already written out, some things to add and change, but yeah, their job descriptions are going to be updated. Highway administrator position, when he was hired last year, the superintendent did not have any job description for that, and on his way out, we'd asked for one to be made, and that still does not have one, so we're going to do all these at one time now.
There was superintendent?
Well, superintendent, but not the highway administrator.
Oh.
And then there was no job description for the administrator, so we're updating that, especially with Tia now, so there's going to be some added duties to her, as well as the foreman.
There was one when Melissa was, so I don't, maybe.
Oh, well, I mean, yeah, so like Melissa's was highway secretary, I think.
Okay.
So we had it, but it was from circa two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, so we asked Mike to pull those, and.
It would have been when they did the salary study.
We should have one to twenty twenty.
Uh, we, we searched everywhere, but I didn't see any updated version of one, I don't, or at least commissioners couldn't find one.
Because that position was on.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so the most updated one was like two thousand and twelve.
It's okay, it's updated now.
So we're, we're updating it now.
I was just confused.
Yeah, no, we're updating them all now, so, but yeah, essentially, we feel like between them three and the administrator, they'll be sharing some duties, that's why we'd like those salaries to be the same going into twenty twenty-six.
And where does the additional person that you budgeted in the professional services lie into that, did you have another person that you just?
You mean the firm?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean Melissa, yeah, so she was brought on more or less in that short-term period where Tia basically was kind of thrust under the fire. You know, Kylie has a busy job, we mentioned to her about it, and she said she'd come back and help, but not anything that we really, you know, needed.
So that's not long-term?
No.
Okay.
No, and when, we approved not to exceed sixty-five hundred, but again, we only anticipate maybe using half that or less, Tia's hit the ground running pretty well, so we don't anticipate having to, you know, the budget's already prepared, Mike and Kylie took care of that before they left, so. If anything, it's kind of understanding, you know, the rock, the motor vehicle fund, all these different funds, and making sure you don't pay things out of the wrong, or an item, and you got the state changing stuff all the time, too, so.
We're good with that, yeah.
Any other questions?
If it doesn't work, well, if it doesn't work out, you know, if the foreman, like we, we don't want to be responsible for making these decisions, or, you know, is there a backup plan, or just start, try something different?
Yeah, we talked to Ashley, you know, the, the commissioners were all on board with trying this, and trying to save the county money and doing it this way, with the understanding that if we come back to you in the foreman and say, hey, we can't do this, it's not going to work, you know.
We talked about deadlines, like, you know, for next year, I told them we do approve our budget in October, and they think that they should be able to probably have some idea if it's going to work or not.
Like next October?
Yeah.
But, well, this October, like, see if it's working out in the short term.
Well, to give you an example, we had a, a timber bridge get hit the other night on Saturday, and it just so happened, one of the foremans were on vacation, so the assistant foreman had to take care of that, and it went about as smoothly as one could ask, so we feel very confident with that. So, yeah, we've had some projects come up that we feel really good about, and the foremans have handled them very smoothly, the administrator has as well.
I think that was kind of something else, too, that was discussed, was that, you know, if you're a board, if you're on a board that manages the county highway department, then the county's your area, not.
Yeah, not in, not in the district, and I think they.
Three individuals could possibly have to, you know, respond to anywhere.
Yeah, so we, in the past, you know, they would communicate by phone, last week, they held their first inner-office meeting with all three foremans and the administrator, and they thought that went, you know, certainly well, that hasn't been done in the past, so I think that's something going forward, they will meet weekly to coordinate.
And that can coordinate equipment, manpower, everything.
So like, for instance, on Friday, they talked about, you know, some paving that needed done, and a couple of people needed three extra guys, another person needed this, so they set all that out on Friday. I think essentially going forward will be a Monday thing, but Brian was leaving for vacation, so they changed it to Friday, but we feel very confident with that, and you know, a couple of commissioners sat in on that, but we just sat back and watched it, so we don't anticipate participating in that in the future, that that's going to be their thing to do, and, you know, if something catches on fire, give us a call, but, but other than that, we feel pretty confident with the team we have as well.
How do you have your meetings on Friday? And we Monday morning, everybody knows where they're going.
Well, maybe it's Friday, we told them it was up to them, we didn't care, you know, as long as they met weekly, and we'd like to see like a quarterly report, and then that's something we could share with you guys to let you know what projects are being updated, what's being worked on, things like that, so.
So as long as the council's aware that, you know, for some reason or another, it doesn't work out well, then there will be, I guess, a request to maybe go back to one superintendent, or change something, I don't know.
Yeah, and then that's what we've discussed with the, the board and Tia, we said, hey, you know, we're trying this, we're, you know, banking on you guys to help us.
You stated the employees are aware that if it didn't work out, then it's salaries, then we revert back to.
Yes, they're aware of that as well, so you know, that four thousand dollar increase and three thousand, you know, they're, they're aware that those salaries will revert back if this doesn't work out, and the foreman appreciate that, because you know, they've, they've only had a seventy-two cent difference from a labor for them, so this gives them a little bit of a bump, plus gives them a little more incentive. You know, the ERC thing we talked about, you know, when Kylie left, we had no backup plan in place, we asked the superintendent to get that, he hadn't got that yet, but anyway, now the three foreman and Tia will have that, so there'll be four people of the ERC certification, so if somebody does leave, there will be a backup plan in place for that, so.
And we could also use the RQAW to help you with that.
Yeah, they can, yeah, they, yeah, and that's the thing, too, I think with the new, like I told Ashley, with the community crossings, it was found out that's October thirty-first this year, not, not January next year, and then, and then every year after that, it'll be July first, there'll only be one call for projects, there won't be two. There's been talk that, you know, the small counties will be okay, because they're going to prioritize less populations, but I don't know how many counties in the state of Indiana know that that October thirty-first deadline's coming up, so. Something else to know, so.
Go ahead, Rick, I'm sorry.
I appreciate all the work and thought that's been put into this, I do believe we need a written procedure that everybody understands, everybody's signed off on before we approve this. I, I don't like the, and I might be wrong, correct me, this understanding part, I, I don't like that. I think we need to make sure we iron this thing out before we do any approvals as far as wages and everything else, so I'm, I'm opposed to this at this point in time.
We could do that with.
We can approve the transfer, but it still can't be done until the salary resolution is done, so if we can prove the transfers, and then they bring us the documents where everyone agrees to it, we lay it out, and then we can fix the salary resolution so that it can actually be done.
And it could be.
Job descriptions have to be created and accepted.
So that way, they know, like, we are on board, as long as you have the documentation to show, like, everyone's agreeance, and here's your job descriptions, everyone knows.
Sure.
So.
And that could be retroed back to.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, I know RJ has asked for some documents, or whoever has in the past, it just hasn't happened, I'm afraid it may not happen this time, I'm just opposed to doing this until we have everything.
I guess I'm unaware of any documents that the council's requested that.
Not, nothing from the council, but you had referred to the previous superintendent or whatever, asked for things to get done and weren't done, I just, I just don't want to prove anything, not the first thing, until we know what exactly is going to happen.
I see that, but I see also saying, okay, we're willing to do this if you do your part now.
Yeah, I mean, and here's the thing, the highway department's been doing this since, you know, Mike informed the county three days before resigning, so I mean, the foremans have stepped up, the administrators have stepped up, the commissioners have stepped up, and you know, we're developing these plans, but as, you know, me and Neil have talked about, you know, some of these plans shouldn't be rushed, you know, they, they shouldn't be just thrown together, you know, in two days, and then we are working through that. But these foremans are doing extra work, the administrator is doing extra work, we have a community crossings grant project that will start paving here, first part of September, those are duties that the foremans now have to oversee, we have no one point of contact, you know, and the administrator will have to oversee that. So as long as the council's aware that, you know, we would like to backpay these foremen and the administrator for the work that they are doing, because it was thrust on them, they didn't have a choice, more than giving two weeks' notice, you know, so we, we've, we've stepped up, there was a fire, and we've stepped up to it, so.
So, so let's, let's give an individual a stipend, let's assign one individual to be responsible, give that person a stipend, and once this is done, then we can work the plan forward after that point in time, instead of giving everybody something now. One person's basically, I know they've had a meeting and et cetera, and they're working through it, but let them work through it, but let's, let's, and maybe we reward them all with a bonus or something like that, but I'm, I'm just opposed for moving forward until we know what the plan is.
I, I think the commissioners request, I mean, I think this transfer's, you know, again, I don't think we're going to change our request, the commissioners are unanimous in this, the employees have been working above and beyond.
Has there been just one person doing things right now?
No.
Except all four of them?
It's all for immense team effort.
Take it, her ERC, did she?
Uh, she got it like before she was officially out there, she, I mean, Bruce was nice enough to let her, I think you had ERC thing, you know, on his time in the prosecutor's office, so thanks to Bruce for that. So no, she's got it, the foreman are working on that now, but no, because if the plan is to go forward with this, you know, the stipend, I mean, whatever that may be, but we look at this, you know, the salary's going to be increased next year for all this work that they're doing, you know, this is, and this is a test run for the next few months for them, so.
So if we request, if the request is for a transfer of funds, that's just, we transfer the money. But that doesn't mean it gets paid out.
Right.
Correct.
So, the others, the other pieces to the puzzle are salary orders has to be changed, employees have to accept new job descriptions.
Yep.
A written procedure has to be created to, even the administrative, or the assistant in the office has to have a clear-cut role, and then once that's all done, and it gets approved, then they can receive the increased salary backdated to the time when they started doing this, was that right? Do I understand this right?
So if we, if we approve the amounts to be transferred based on what, we need to calculate the number of pays left with the increase of how much they should get on each of those pays, because they're kind of prorated, it's not really the whole transfer amount. And then we can put that amount in the salary, salary resolution, so that way we can then pass it, and then we can backdate it.
But not, but this transfer doesn't, it's not the only piece, is what I'm saying, is that.
No.
This is just one step, so there's multiple other things that have to occur before everything, but in the background, all the, all the work's going on.
Yes.
I think it'd easier, be easier to pay one person now the dollars, make that person responsible, make sure that this happens, and once it happens, then we can go back and do everything.
But we can't even do that, because we don't have the salary resolution.
I know, so.
So we can't.
We need to do one or the other, but I don't, I don't see, given everybody a increase at this point in time.
The highway department won't work without all four of them, there isn't just one person, it's, it's a team effort of four, so I'll leave it at that, that the commissioners' request is before you tonight, and that we plan on having most of those documents done Friday, but again, keep, keep in mind that the job descriptions will probably be ironclad, but the, the board of directors, as me and Neil's worked back and forth through things, that might be a living document to add things, change things, but for the most part, the job description will be ironclad once we get those done.
One thing I'm going to say is a team concept can work and will work if you have the right team, I don't know that we have the right team, and I'm not willing to move forward until I can see performance.
Well, the commissioners.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
The commissioners are unanimous.
Give one to do it.
Is that this is the right team, this is what we want to do.
My, my viewpoint is that this is a different scenario, okay, so it, most counties don't do it this way, and by the same token, most counties don't do it like we used to do it, which was three independent districts with three relatively independent budgets, I believe. It, it, three different, you know, there were three different highway departments at one time, so that merged into one, which became more of a similar style program or management style that other counties use, without question. This is kind of a hybrid of the two, it keeps, you know, it's one budget, one unified goal, but has three, you know, the commissioners feel like they want to have three, three individuals manage as a team, which is unique, sort of like their cell, you know, their own management of the county, you might say, a board of commissioners, a board of directors, or whatever. So it's kind of modeled after that, I think, but I think I've made my point on that as an idea, but whether it. But whether it'll work or not, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't expect, you know, they're not going to try it for six months and then see and then not get paid to do that. But, um, if, if it does work, then it, you know, it's an admin. My view is that, and coming from where I come from, you know, I feel that the management of the highway department's one hundred percent, you know, it's clearly the, the function of the commissioners has an administrative role. It's well within their, I guess, you know, duty and I'm willing to take the steps to try it, to make it work smoothly. And if it doesn't, then we can discuss it then. But I don't know if it's going to work or not, but I have good feeling that it might.
Yeah, well, we, we feel confident, like I said, with, with what, uh, issues have arisen, the foreman penned them swiftly. You know, that first meeting that we had, you know, the foreman said even with superintendent structure, they never had those meetings. You know, so they feel really engaged together that they can accomplish things, coordinate things together, so.
It's, the highway department, it can be as, you know, every day's different, but a lot of things that highway departments do are similar. You know, day-to-day operations don't change a whole lot. There are different challenges every day, but every year you know you're going to plow snow. Every year you know you're going to pave roads or whatever. It's a lot of those things. You're going to mow.
Sure.
So the tasks don't change a whole lot. It's just management. How do you manage all that?
So that's my point. You have a team, but you always have a team leader. Reward the team leader right now. Reward the team later once this is proven, but one or two instances doesn't mean this team will work.
Well.
That's, that's just.
And having, sometimes having a single leader doesn't work. I mean, that can be proven.
That's right.
With the wrong person.
If you have the wrong.
I'm not saying anything about our, I'm just saying in general.
Right.
You can have a, a bad experience with one person in charge, um, by the same token, so. My thought is that if the commissioners want to move forward with a three-person program like this, you know, I'm willing to let them try it because that's, they have to do this. So that's their version of management. I'm not going to, you know, I don't know that it won't work. I don't have any suggestions other than my own experiences, which are perfect, so.
Is that a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the request, transfer of funds from the superintendent, budget line item to the administrative assistant, highway foreman and the amount shown on the request.
I'll, I'll second that. I'd like to give it a try, see how it goes.
I have a motion for Mr. Costello, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve a total of fifteen thousand dollars in transfers from salary line items and superintendent to administrative assistant and highway foreman. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, should that, should be, should that be highway foreman's instead of just one?
Yeah, there's three in that line item.
Okay, so. It's only shows one as far as grammatically, so.
Okay, that's just what it is in the.
I know, but this way you know it was three. You can say number three or whatever.
Any other discussion?
Eventually there will be one chief, right? I mean.
So, you know, in discussion with Neil about this, we talked about the highway board having like a president or a, you know, liaison or maybe the highway administrator oversees that too. So that's being discussed between the commissioners. But yeah, the foremans, you know, they've already, right now designated one guy out of them three to more or less take the calls for, you know, order the rock, order the paving, do all that. You know, and they're meeting Friday. They pretty much designated one person on Friday.
I think my discussion was that if you're going to have three people but one agency, then each would have to have an equivalent amount of say in day-to-day operations with perhaps one person being voted in as a president of the board or something that would be a contact point for people visiting the county who want to talk to the highway department or developers or state officials may want to speak with a person.
So, yeah, they done that Friday. They designated one and I'm not entirely sure who it's called, they ordered Brian, but they discussed it among themselves.
Strictly just as, you know, administrative type function, not necessarily anything else, but.
Yeah.
Um, but I don't, but the, the goal is not to have one person in charge eventually. It's a three-person board that would stay. And my recommendation for, for that was simply because if, if we were going to do three people, I just didn't want to see it go back to three independent, non, you know, non-coordinating marriages.
And as an example, on, uh, Wednesday, one of the foremen had said, hey, there's this new pressure paving program working in Illinois to do road paving with. They'd said, hey, foreman, I'd like to go check it out. They all three got together, drove to Champaign, Illinois and witnessed it firsthand, something that is like half the cost of hot mix and gives an extended life over chip and seal. Just as an example, that the three of them got together, went over and spent three, four hours viewing that project.
I will, one, one other advantage, if you will, to this is that if in the future the county does hire an engineer position, that person would seamlessly move into a over, you know, oversight of that operation perhaps. And you wouldn't have, like some counties have, kind of like, uh, they're doubled up on management at highway departments. They've got a superintendent and an engineer and kind of do, you know, kind of overlap. So at least in the future, if they did hire a county engineer, you wouldn't have any issues with overlapping duties or something and that county engineer would have more function, I suppose, over the highway department. But it also saves the county money at a time when, you know, if we don't replace this one single person. But because we have three supervisors and the superintendent as is, if you don't replace that person, then, you know, we're looking for savings this year if I'm not mistaken, so, um, that's a big savings. And again, I don't know if it's perfect or not, but I'm a hundred percent think it can work, so that's my thought.
So when, when, when will this plan all be put together? Uh, September, October?
So, so as discussed earlier in the meeting, Rick, uh, we plan on having the job descriptions done this Friday.
Right, but what's the drop dead date? Can, can we have one? I mean, September thirty-first or?
To say if it's going to work or not?
No, just the written plan.
Well, I think we anticipate trying to have that written plan together by Friday with the job descriptions. But again, it might be a living document because there's some back and forth on that.
I understand.
But that's the one I shared with Neil. It's got the parameters already in it.
I'd give yourself some more time. I'd give yourself some more time.
Yeah, you know, so.
Well, our next meeting is, yeah, we got a month.
Got a month.
Well, we're on a month, but the job descriptions, we, like I said, we've been working on. We'd like to get those done.
Maybe a week before our meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just let us know everything got good and we'll, we'll.
Sure.
I think maybe a, uh, a, uh, well, I'm losing my train of thought here. The, uh, chain command, like a, some sort of a diagram for chain of command. Be pretty simple to create one, which would, chain of command would be shared with everyone there so they know what's going on.
Okay. I have a motion on the table for Mr. Costello, second to Mr. Somerville, for the approval of the transfer in the Highway Motor Vehicle eleven seventy-six fund. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All opposed, state no.
No.
The transfer is approved. Nope. Run quick. There's one, one remaining transfer though. It is, uh, reporting online and it is two hundred dollars in the health fund. They're switching it from life insurance to probate cover at the end of the year. None is it? All right. Moving along, we have the monthly treasurer's report. Are there any questions, comments on that? Being none, we'll move along. Oh, no, we pulled that one.
Okay.
We got that one figured out. And then, uh, we do not have any old business tonight, so we'll move on to new business. This evening, uh, Judge Chris Reed is here about probation officers. Good evening.
Good evening. Counselors and women, thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight and, and, um, as we go through this, I provided a couple of weeks ago a letter, kind of a brief summary along with some attachments. I'll refer to those, uh, in just a minute as they go forward. But before we get started, I have with me, uh, this evening Cheryl Woodard, who is the administrative assistant for probation. I have David Robinson, which is chief probation officer, Lynn Cook, which is a probation officer and has been here for a period of time, was a probation officer in Illinois for an extended period of time. And then the other probation officer I have is, is Ryan Williams, but due to, uh, a family thing, he could not be here this evening. He planned on being here. Briefly, just so you understand where, where the court is coming from and the reason the court is standing here instead of specifically probation starting this out. Probation, uh, at the, uh, discretion of the General Assembly became a judicial function in nineteen eighty. So for forty-five years, probation has been under the umbrella of the county court in the county in which you're in, but ultimately under the Supreme Court. Uh, the Judicial Conference of Indiana was statutorily created, staffed by the Indiana Office of Court Services, who is, who is under the Supreme Court. So with that, the, all standards are set by the Judicial Conference of Indiana and also the Indiana Office of Court Services under the direction of the Indiana Supreme Court. So every number that I have here this evening, uh, is a number that comes from and is dictated by the Supreme Court of the state of Indiana. Uh, it's not a number that I've come up with. It's not a number that, um, I can taint in any way whatsoever. The numbers are the numbers, uh, and that, uh, is, is, in going forward, um, this is, this is a, and I'm here this evening for multiple reasons, but I think one of the most important reasons, and I'll circle back around to in just a minute, is public safety, um, and how that is affected by our probation department. The, just quickly, uh, probation officers and their requirements are set by the Supreme Court. The minimum requirements are that they have to be twenty-one years of age, have to be an American citizen, they have to have a bachelor degree. They have to take a probation officer's exam, which is very stringent. And then they have to go through an orientation by the Indiana Office of Court Services. Those are the minimum standards. Uh, the court can set additional standards that they require, uh, under the circumstances. As I said, David, uh, is chief probation officer. We have a juvenile probation officer and when the last probation officer resigned to go to a higher paying job at the probation department in Vigo County, uh, the position was never refilled. Her position and the cases she had was distributed between the probation officers that were there, meaning David, Ryan and Lynn. At that period of time, Ryan had been the probation officer in handling strictly probationary, uh, juvenile probation cases. However, due to the caseload that was dumped on the three that were left, uh, he had to also, um, deal with the adult cases as well. One of the things I will say about the juvenile probation officer, and if you noticed in the exhibits two and three that I put forth, it shows that, um, the, the state standard, the state maximum caseload, uh, he's right at that or a little bit above. One of the things for the juvenile, juvenile probation officer, and keep in mind, everything that I'm discussing tonight is mandated by the Supreme Court, uh, and they have no real discretion, nor does the court have any discretion in that. As a juvenile probation officer, we have juveniles that are stationed in different, um, facilities around the state of Indiana. Indianapolis, Mishawaka, uh, different locations like that. It is state mandated that the juvenile probation officer has to face-to-face interview those children or those juveniles on a regular basis. So sometimes Ryan is gone for two days a week to make the trip to visit with them. Sometimes, uh, he cannot get that accomplished in an eight-hour day. So his numbers are a little bit, um, different because of being a juvenile probation officer. Uh, he is required to do face-to-face with these children or juveniles wherever they are at. I will state as, as looking at the numbers, um, currently there are three hundred and eighty-six probationers, uh, or individuals on probation in Vermillion County. I will say that there's approximately sixty pending and what that means is when you have sixty pending, they're currently either in the Indiana Department of Corrections or on Community Corrections, a direct commitment and a portion of their sentence is probation. Now, with that being three hundred and eighty-six probationers, the probation department is currently covering a caseload of over six hundred cases under the circumstances because some of these probationers have multiple cases, um, as far as, uh, being monitored on. The, uh, if you look at exhibits, uh, two and three, uh, I will say that, uh, Ms. Cook helped me extensively as well as David and Ms. Woodard going through these numbers and reviewing these. Because if you look at the, as in, as set forth in the letter that I sent with the, um, website in there, if you went and looked at that, I have a copy of it here. I'm not even going to pull it out because I don't understand some of the formulas that the Supreme Court uses. I've learned a lot about them going through this and how they come up with the cases. As you'll notice on exhibit two, there's, uh, the words low, moderate, high and very high. Those are the levels in which that it's assigned to a probationer once they go on probation. Different levels, whether it's low, moderate or high or very high require, uh, this is, this is required. It's not, at the discretion of the probation department, a certain number of contacts with that individual on a weekly or a monthly basis. Of course, uh, it, it, it only seems, uh, right that the higher that their level is, the higher the number of times they have to communicate and, uh, check in with probation. So that's what those numbers are. Those numbers come from the formulas, uh, that are set forth by the Indiana Office of Court Services to the Supreme Court. With that, you put it into the formula that's set forth, uh, in the document that the website has provided in the letter and you come out with the caseload of which our probation officers here in Vermillion County are currently carrying. That is the number that is listed as the total for, uh, David Robinson is three hundred and seven. Total for Lynn Cook is two hundred and ninety-five, and I'm rounding these figures off. And the total for Ryan Williams is one thirty-three. The, and as you can see in there, he has juveniles that is added into his, uh, caseload, which he was, uh, primarily the juvenile probation officer before, uh, Quinn left the probation department to go to Vigo County. On exhibit three, if you look at exhibit three, this is, um, it has the, what the actual caseload should be for each probation officer by the standards of the Supreme Court. As you can see with Ryan, or with, uh, David Robinson, his caseload should be one thirty-four twenty-five. However, his caseload is two and a half times that, at three hundred and seven point eight. Lynn Cook's caseload should be one forty-four twenty-four versus two ninety-five point six, which is two times. And then Ryan Williams, uh, should be one thirty-five point seven five and his is one thirty-three point five. So right now, we have, uh, probation officers that are outside their maximum caseload by an extensive amount. I will say this and moving forward and back and getting to the community and public safety issue that is involved here. When an individual is put on probation, they have been convicted of a criminal act. And under those circumstances, uh, they, instead of going to the Indiana Department of Corrections, which, that's a whole nother story, but the Indiana Department of Corrections has created a lot of resistance over the last few years in overcrowding and therefore, um, changing the rules as far as who can be sent, when they can be sent, how long they can be sent there. So keep in mind that probation is, has been somewhat increased or dictated by the Indiana Department of Corrections and their attempt to reduce the overcrowding in the prison system. So there has been an increase in those that are. in the prison system. So there has been an increase in those that are put on probation. It is an alternative to incarceration, and with that being the case, probation department is to ensure the probation officers are to ensure that they do what is necessary in society and are not a risk to public safety. However, with the caseload that our probation officers have right now, they are very limited. In fact, it's nonexistent that they are able to get out into the field to do probationary checks, which is one of the, one of the ways in which you ensure that the probationer is doing what they're supposed to be and are following the rules as provided by probation and not violating those rules and putting public safety at risk. The reason that they are not able to do those home visits is because they cannot get away from their desk with the amount of work that's involved. I noticed, and maybe you noticed on Exhibit Two, there's also a section on there that talks about has PSI. That is a pre-sentence investigation. The pre-sentence investigation is mandatory by the Indiana Department of Corrections, if anybody is going to the Indiana Department of Corrections. There is some leeway on what can be done, as whether it has to be a full-blown PSI, or whether it can just be the cover pages. Under most circumstances, when it is a court that is making determination of what the sentence is, and it's in the court's discretion, in order to withstand a potential appellate argument, to uphold the sentence, the court requires a full PSI, which lists all of their criminal history. Their IRAS scores, meaning how they score as far as potential recidivism, and then the recommendations of the department. Now, keep in mind that some of these pre-sentence investigations can become quite lengthy, because they have to list all the criminal history. And when you're dealing with some individuals that have criminal histories that are 60 pages long on triple Is, that all has to go into PSI. So that takes an extraordinary, extraordinary amount of time to do that. That is required. Therefore, they have to get it done. An individual in the state of Indiana has to be sentenced within 30 days unless it's waived by the defendant. So they have a brief window for which they can get this done. So there are certain things that they have to get done that they have to prioritize, and right now, their priority is getting the stuff done that needs to be done for the court. People call in, but you and I know if, it's a lot different than seeing somebody in person, whether they're following the rules or not, is whether they call in or not. I will say this, just as an example, David currently has 20-plus sex offenders on probation for some type of sex crime, whether it being that they have served a portion in the Indiana Department of Corrections, and the subsequent sentence as a step down was to probation. It could be that they were in Indiana Department of Corrections, stepped down to Community Corrections, a direct commitment, and then stepped down to probation, which is not uncommon under the circumstances to integrate individuals back in to society. But those sex offenders and high-risk offenders, he is mandated to contact them four times a month. Difference between contacting them on the phone or contacting them out in, out in their home environment. Another thing that I will bring up, and then I will come close to wrapping this up. I don't know whether any of you are aware of the neutrality laws that have gone into effect in the state of Indiana as of July 1st of 2025. The full effect of those neutrality laws at this period of time are unknown. What we do know is that the schools have been mandated by statute to do a lot of more stuff without the funding that comes along with dealing with, just as an example, five absences unexcused in a 10-day period. The school's required to call the people in, to have meetings with them, determine what to do, so on and so forth. And believe me, I'm just summarizing this because statutes, I'm still learning as I go forward. If you have 10 or more absences, you're considered a habitual absentee from school, and that's where it gets interesting, because it shall be reported by the school, it shall be investigated, it shall be, and so on and so forth. I know that the probation department, what, we're third, fourth day in the school, depending on whether you're in South Vermillion, which started a day earlier than North Vermillion, and the probation department is already getting calls about truancy, individuals not being enrolled in school. So they are fielding those calls as well. It's only going to increase, because there's going to have to be a liaison between the schools and, and what goes on with the court, where we go from there, what is, that goes on with the prosecutor's office, what they prosecute, because as part of this, there's mandated that probable cause affidavits be sent up, either for truancy, educational, like so on and so forth. So the probation office and the officers are going to be required to do quite a bit more work under the neutrality laws, and how that takes place, whether those individuals are informally adjusted, whether those individuals, there is a program that deals with it. There used to be an ASAP program when there was an alternative school in Monizuma, which if you had a habitual truant, that was a program they could go through, and they had to report to the court on, and it was, without boring you on that, I'm not going to get into that. But under the circumstances in this, the, I know the main thing is money and where we go from here, but we also have the situation of looking at, we had four, one left for a higher paying job. We've added more to the probation department's load. Not only did they assume what that probation officer had, but there is also foreseeable future, the increased workload on the probation department as we move forward. And it is something that the court has to address in order as we go forward. These are caseloads that are mandated by the state of Indiana, by the Supreme Court. This is all under the Supreme Court, and as the probation department be a division of the court, it is the court's responsibility to make sure that this situation is in some way remedied with the extreme numbers that each probation officer has, and also for public safety concerns as well. David, do you have anything that you could think up to add here this evening?
Yes, yes.
Lynn, Lynn, do you have anything to add?
Yes, very welcome.
Cheryl, do you have anything to add? So at this, at this period of time, and I mean, I'll be, I'm always honest and straightforward. One would help, but I may be coming back for another one, depending on where this truancy goes and what we, what we have to do as far as making sure that, one, the public is safe, two, that our children are safe. I will also say that it is increasing work, along with some of the mental health issues we're dealing with and how to handle those. The probation department is responsible for, specifically on the juvenile side, making sure that all services are in place, a lot of what we call wraparound services, make sure that there's services in place with the family, make sure that they're visiting. Ryan also goes to the school on, on a frequent basis, to make sure things are going well there. So that's where we're at. So at this point, I'm asking for help. I'm asking, yeah.
What's going, since T.O. moved to the highway, are we, with peer court, would that, are they going to continue that, or is that going to help? Would that help any of this with this, because I read some of that truancy laws.
I understand. At this period of time, as my understanding, the peer court is, at this period of time, suspended. I don't know whether it is a, under, at this point, under the prosecutor's office, I would have to let Bruce speak to that. I don't want to speak for him, but at this period of time, there is no peer court for which to put individuals into. And I know that in, I'm going to set up some meetings with the, with the school and discuss, you know, how we can work together to try to figure out, because there's a lot of logistics in that, as far as having to have records from the school, and, and a lot of confidential stuff that the court is not privy to, but the court would need to know about. So at this period of time, short answer to your question is, peer court's not an option.
Okay.
And I will say, you know, that with this, I have started trying to figure out, that's one of the things, in meeting with the school, maybe coming up with a program, not necessarily like the ASAP program, that is no more, because, one, we don't have the alternative school in Monizuma, but some way of working with this as an alternative to basically going down the criminal route. Any other questions?
Is this something that you put in? We just got the budget books tonight before the meeting. Is this something in your budget for next year?
It is.
Okay. I want to give you a copy of the spreadsheet I did. Just for comparison numbers, I had gone through Indiana Gateway compensation reports to see how many probation officers other counties had of our size, and we're very similar to other counties our size, or like Tipton. Tipton has literally, based on, these are the 2020 census numbers. They have 100 less people than us, but they had two officers. Park County has about 500, 600 more people than us. They have three also. So I kind of like laid it out to see if we were understaffed. And is this something that, like, other counties are dealing with two, to where they, you think their caseloads are just double and higher than, or is like everybody across here?
Here's the thing, there's a lot of stuff that that paperwork doesn't tell you. It doesn't tell you how many, it breaks down like in Exhibit Two. It does not tell you how many are high, low, very high.
Yeah, I don't have caseloads. I just have, based on population numbers and like an average of how many citizens per officer. Like, I have, I put mostly comparable counties, some geographically, some our size on here, and I'll give you a copy of it.
And that's fine. The thing is, is that document comparing, it's kind of like comparing apples to oranges, because there's a lot that goes into it otherwise. Just saying, okay, this population is similar to the number of probation officers they have there. It, the workload is, is set forth by the formulas by the Supreme.
That's what I'm asking, if everyone's having trouble with this right now, because realistically, right now, we have one officer for every 5,100 people, but some counties have only an officer for every 7,600, or 9,500, 8,300, 6,600. We're kind of in line with Park and Fountain.
But the numbers go off the case.
So do we have just a population that is heavily on probation?
I mean, there, to a certain extent, you could say that, but the thing is, is what goes into it is the caseload numbers. The population of a county has nothing to do with the determination of probation officer's numbers. That is all set forth by what numbers they actually have in front of them, as far as their caseload, versus what the formulas spit out once they put those numbers in. So the population of a county, you could have a county with, with a ratio of probation officer to 15,000 people. That just means that the numbers that they have in front of them is, is.
Going through a lot of the reports, I also saw a lot of them have the Community Corrections program, and from what I briefly found, is it looks like we're in a regional one here, not in individual county.
We are. We're in West Central Regional Community Corrections. The main office is out of Petersburg. Now, the thing is, is mostly covers Park, Vermillion, Fountain, Montgomery, Warren, counties are the counties it covers. Now, they do transfer some to other counties. The Community Corrections is a completely different creature, because Community Corrections, under most circumstances, Community Corrections is what's considered a direct commitment to the Indiana Department of Corrections. It's just they're not in the Indiana Department of Corrections. They're being monitored by a division of the Indiana Department of Corrections. So if they mess up and they go to jail, they can't bond out, because it would be like saying somebody in Putnamville can bond out.
Is that program something we can utilize more, though, to help relieve some of the probation cases?
It, well.
I don't know.
Yeah, the thing is, is what you run into is, one, whether the defendant, if it's part of a plea agreement, 90% of all cases, as a national average, 90% of all cases plead. If that was not the case, our criminal justice system would implode, because you could not handle the number of cases that are, that are handled by our criminal justice system. So the thing is, is to get an individual to agree to go to Community Corrections or the Indiana Department of Corrections, you're normally going to be dealing with more serious criminal acts, such as Level Fours, Level Threes, and Level Sixes. It's going, unless they have multiple Level Sixes, unless they have probation revocations, you're normally not going to get them. Could, could we utilize them more? I would like to be able to utilize them more. However, the circumstances that you face in these cases kind of dictates whether we can utilize them more or not, because you've also got to deal with, as these being a direct commitment, it has to be an executable offense through the Department of Corrections. It has to meet their criteria. And as the Indiana Department of Corrections, with some exceptions, don't want any Level Six felonies. Okay? A majority of the cases that we have, and I say a majority, are Level Six and below. However, we do have, I mean, quite a few Level Fives, Level Fours, Level Threes, Level Twos. Luckily, we don't have any MRs, which are murder, so on and so forth. The other thing is, Community Corrections has its own statutory guidelines by whether a person is acceptable to them, to, to the program or not. One is based on their previous, whatever crime they have been charged with and convicted of. Two is whatever crime that they have been convicted of in the past. Three, they have to have a stable residence in which to go on Community Corrections to. And unfortunately, a lot of the individuals that don't have a residence that meets the qualifications for Community Corrections, like, there can't be somebody else in the residence that's on Community Corrections. There's other, so on and so forth, whether they're on parole, whether they're, so, the Community Corrections, it is, it is great. We utilize it to the point we can. Unfortunately, they're kind of their own creature, but they're not under the court where probation is.
So the venue I went to the other day, that was West Central?
West Central Regional Community.
That's the one I went to.
Now, that, that was, though, that was a J-RAC meeting. Now, as part of J-RAC, Danny Snyder is the one that is the, I don't know her exact title, but to me, would be the president, as far as going forward, the program director for J-RAC.
Okay. So the only way to improve these caseload numbers is man hours and not another tool? Is that, is that right?
Pretty much correct, yes. I would like to be able to use Community Corrections more, as far as that, but it's not really in, it's, it's, it's not really in my control how much I can use Community Corrections versus, like, probation, because I can't unless they come to me, unless it's an open plea, and they can be sentenced to the Indiana Department of Corrections, I can not put them on Community Corrections, because it's considered actually a DOC sentence. Now, there is some limited times which they will take them as a term of probation, but Community Corrections is pretty much a branch of the Indiana Department of Corrections, and they follow the Indiana Department of Corrections rules.
Now, as far, as far as our staff, is there any tool of some, some sort that could help them manage these caseloads that would bring the caseload down, that they don't have, that we could get for them? I mean.
I mean, I will let them speak, but it's, it's, it's pretty much, I mean, they, this is, and one of the things is, is with this, this, everything that is done and how it is done is dictated by the Supreme Court statute. And that, that is where you, you unfortunately can't get a lot of wiggle room, as far as determining how to reduce that caseload. So basically, the answer to your question is yes. The way to reduce the caseload, because the caseload first increased when the probation officer left, and then it's continued to increase as more and more cases have gone forward, under the circumstances. So.
So as an annual basis, is it, is it going up sequentially, so to speak? Every year it increases 10% or?
I would, I don't have numbers specifically, but it does continue, overall caseload continues to increase. Overall caseload continues to increase. I will say this, there's, there are tools out there, there's software out there, there's kiosks where people can check in and things like that. But again, you're looking at fifty, so a hundred thousand dollars for one of those. The thing is, the Chesapeake Court, it's going away. Those juveniles, they're still going to have cases. They're still going to have things that happen at the schools. That stuff right now is going to get filtered back to Ryan and that's going to increase. And I'll say this about Quinn, when she left, she had probably around a hundred and three people. You wouldn't believe the amount of time, he had high-risk offenders, drug and alcohol cases, severe meth cases, your heroin cases, your cocaine, that type of stuff. She spent hours trying to get these people into treatment facilities. She spent hours tracking to make sure they're going to their meetings. Trying to get them help, trying to get them back in the community. Not to mention going to court, speaking on their behalf, or unfortunately, you know, filing petitions and saying they can't do probation. When she left, that hurt. Because there was no way the rest of us could put that much time into these people. Like just said, twenty-six offenders on my caseload? How often do you think they're getting seen? How often do you think they're getting checked on? They're not. And it's just that simple. We're doing the best we can, you know, to get, to keep our head above water. That's not taking into account making phone calls, doing other reports and all the other little things we have to do in the office. Try to check on every person, two hundred and twenty people. It's not going to happen. But I want to put in all that extra effort, how to make these people be successful.
And I will say, and David brought this up. One of the things we do as far as to try to help ensure, one of the things either through probation or as a part of the case, we do try to send individuals to sober living. We try other things to make sure we don't have recidivism. We send a lot of people to try to intrude sober living environments, hoping that when they come back, then there will be less of a hassle for probation. So I guess as far as trying to reduce the caseload some, that is a way. But, you know, as far as where we're at now and the numbers, it's just, it's manpower and man hours. Any, any other questions?
I did see when I was going through all the numbers that the counties, Orange has, Orange County has somebody paid through a grant. Is there any? That was the only one I saw that said paid through a grant. But Rush County had three probation officers. It was coming from their community corrections fund? So I don't know how that works. But is there any other means of paying for it? Like of any other programs that you know that we can solicit?
David can speak to this because I, I kind of defer to him. Because in the past, they've utilized some other funds to assist or match. And David, if you want to speak to that.
Community Corrections, DOC, they do have some grants. We applied a year or two years ago. We got denied. They basically said the funds are less now than what they were, they're drying up. I don't, Park County pays out a fund, but it's for a problem solving court. But we've tried in the past and we've never received the grant.
And I will say this too. Probation, we've even met trying to now, and, and we're still working on that. It's, it's not a quick process. Trying to get a group that we'll go after and collect money from fees that have not been paid. And that's still in the, in the introductory phases. It's not, and Cheryl has done a lot of work on that and Lynn as well. And I won't, I won't belabor that. But we, we're trying several different ways to come up with money.
And that's how we funded the fourth probation officer, was the juvenile fees that had been used for a while. And when it was basically running out.
Running out.
That's when the one person left and left that vacancy. And that's when we went back to three. Because that fourth position was never in the general fund. So we withdrew fees.
Right, and we tried bringing two into the budget here. It's like, seven percent they paid over the year. That never happened.
Is there any other questions?
So this is, I need to add this to our budget book.
If you would like to, yes. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for all for listening to me this evening and considering this. Thank you.
Next on new business, Sheriff Holt Camp.
As you know, we had to move about eight percent of our inmates a while back due to the air conditioning going out. I started getting some of those bills from the other jails that were housing them for us for about a week. I've received bills from three of the five jails. Two of them haven't sent anything yet. I'm going to call and remind them if they send them, they send them. But right now, it looks like we owe eight thousand seven hundred dollars.
Do you expect that to go up?
I'm sorry.
You expect that to go up?
I'm assuming at some point they're going to send me bills. I can follow up with them tomorrow and say, hey, you know, maybe they're going to be, maybe they're doing me a favor and just not charging me, I don't know, but.
Tell them that their air conditioning ever goes out.
Right, I'd be more than happy to.
A favor and I owe you?
I'd be more than happy to let them come out and spend the night.
That was in June, right?
In the June, yeah, I think it was right before, before July, if I remember right.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah.
Eight thousand's not too bad.
Yeah.
No, it could be out.
That's only three fifths of the bill.
Yeah, that's right.
So how many have you not received yet? Two?
I get two counties that have not sent me a bill. I don't, I don't know.
I remember the one, I can't remember what county it was, but they took forever when they were housing them, housing them for the construction.
Construction, yeah, yeah.
So how many inmates would they have been at those two?
One was, both were quite a lot. Over fifteen-ish, twelve to fifteen-ish at each probably, off the top of my head.
How long do we have to pay them? Do we need to advertise an additional next month?
I mean, I could let it know it'll be a month, it's not going to be an issue. There wasn't, they just sent me, there's no due date on it or anything. I can forward this all to you if you would like.
Okay. Then if you had a, maybe have a rough estimate of how much we might owe the other two counties?
I can check them out.
Might as well just call them.
Yeah, I think you're up for it.
I'd just call and get over with.
I will call them.
I got a question from an unrelated topic. You and Mayor Clinton, what are you guys doing now when you encounter an illegal?
They come to the jail and we have a number we call. And basically they'll give, they'll let us know if we need to hold them or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
A number for ICE or somebody?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And if, if they meet the criteria, then they'll tell us to hold them and if not, they'll, they won't put a hold on them.
The guys like that one last year, they would have probably come and got them, wouldn't they?
Who's that?
Oh, you said you got somebody on the highway with drugs and possibly, you had to turn him loose because they. I think that was last year.
I think it was an interdiction team. Yeah, ran into them.
I don't know, we, we encounter that more than we think probably, yeah.
Are you doing the same thing, John, in your department?
I don't stop anybody.
Mayor's department doesn't put people over.
Let them go to another county. They didn't give you red and blue lights, huh?
Well, if they get arrested in Clinton, they're coming here, so.
Yeah.
They're not spending a night in a city jail.
Thanks, Mike. All right, the last item of new business this evening is Mayor Clinton, John Moore's here.
I hope you all have copies of what it was that I sent through. That's good because.
Did you forget it, John?
I did.
I need it back.
So anyway, I figured I'd, we'd do all that stuff in advance so you'd know what I was here for. I wouldn't have to talk so much. I kind of figured I'd be the last one on the gym. So I wanted to make it brief because everybody's ready to go home. But the long and the short of it is, in order for me to put our two newest police officers on the road, I need at least two, but I really need three vehicles. They aren't cheap. Normally, before I ever got involved with this, in times past, the USDA would come up with grants, twenty, eighty, match. Said he would match twenty percent, the grant was worth eighty percent. And they would buy two or three units at a time. Of course, we all know the USDA's quit doing their match. We all know that money's going to get tied in two years. Which is why I am looking to take care of this matter while money's not quite so tight yet. And the thing about it is, you'll see out there, I put odometer readings on. Sheriff and I were talking briefly downstairs. He's got some units he wants to get rid of, but they're older and they all have six-figure odometer. So if I was to purchase something like that, I'm just buying somebody else's headache and is living on borrowed time. So my deal here is countywide, citywide, we are trying to promote growth. We're trying to get people to move in. City Clinton actually has got a developer that's going to start working on Glen Ridge. People aren't going to move here if we don't have adequate police protection. We get by with two patrolmen per shift. We have a chief. We have a shift commander who serves as a floater. We get approximately a hundred and five mutual aid calls a year, which sends us to St. Bernice, to the Vigo County line. It's far north, it's thirty-six. And once in a while, we have to go across the bridge and go over into Park County. The city has thirty-four, almost, nope, we got thirty-five point seven eight one street miles to patrol. I had to okay that the other day, so that's what I've got written down. And we have four parks. Our population is approximately four thousand eight hundred and fourteen as of twenty twenty-three. We're thirty percent of the county's population, but we're only worth eleven percent of the tax. Which I realize it's not based on population. But we get eleven percent of the tax money that the county gets. So I'm here. This is out of the ordinary. It's not something that's ever been done, what I've been around to see done. To outfit two or three cars would cost about a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. On April the tenth, our chief priced three vehicles, Dodge Durangos. Base price, forty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Which the sheriff told me that's a good price for. Then the stuff you have to buy extra, like the crazy little blue lights and the weird old sirens. Runs about eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars each. So I'm asking you to consider dipping into your stash to help us out before things get really, really bad.
How soon do you think you're going to need those vehicles?
Yesterday.
How many did you say you have now currently?
How many, what?
How many do you have now?
Vehicles? There are, it's in that thing and I forgot.
Is that all of your?
Yes, I did.
And Steve, the thing about it is, okay, one, two, three, four of them are not working. The Crown Vic has a cage in it, but it's got a hundred and thirty thousand miles. And the only thing I use it for is to bring violent people from Clinton up to jail.
And how many officers do you have?
We have six patrolmen, a shift commander and a chief. And we have two people on dispatch. And we actually have two people on patrol twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Are the vehicles, take them vehicles right now as far as?
They are, they take them home, they buy a tank of gas a month, they keep them clean, they wash them themselves and that all kinds of other.
Uh, yeah, I'm not against it. I'm just saying I didn't know if like, if the officers, if they left a vehicle, like a fleet vehicle, the next officer comes in and gets in.
They take them home.
Now, does Fairview have?
Fairview has a part-time Mr. Stoffel, I hope his name, and then they.
They did have part-time debt. They did, I think he is consistent, maybe he was on.
I may, I may be wrong on that. But I do know we get a lot of calls there, but I also know the sheriff gets a lot of calls there.
Fairview did have a full-time, Monday through Friday, eight to five marshal, deputy marshal.
Yeah.
And then I believe Mr. Stoffel's the marshal. And they may have had another volunteer, but I, I don't know if they have a full-time person anymore. That's what Fairview used their lit public safety money that they were automatically distributed as of town, which is another question. Do you, is that the lit public safety money that the city of Clinton gets automatically from the distribution? Is that, I don't know what that amount is, but I don't know if that's fully accounted for with salaries. I know half of it.
Part of it is going to the firehouse for the new firehouse we built, which is also having the ambulance. And then part of it goes for salaries and part of it actually gets banked. And part of it's used for emergencies, but we don't have enough stash for free vehicles.
You talked to any of the commissioners for their blessing yet? Because any kind of additional money would have to be like asked for at some point from somebody to put it in the budget.
Well, no, I haven't talked to the commissioners yet, but you guys have to keep in mind, I'm new at this mayor game. And I know that you people control the purse room. And I also know that all of you, and this is a compliment, you're all very, very tight.
So I know the commissioners last Monday, Tuesday, entered in some type of agreement on vehicles or kind of looking at supplying vehicles. So.
What do we pay a month for an ambulance station?
I can say, there's pros and cons.
The cons right now are negative.
Yeah.
All of ours are out of service that he's going to sell. The last time he sold surplus, we didn't make three thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
But would that be something that if they do the fleet, is that advantageous if you like put yours in ours?
It's a possibility.
Like if you put your vehicles in with our fleet? Would that be advantageous? I don't know the numbers on it all, I haven't seen.
It might be.
Down the road, but not right now.
But not right, it's normal.
Because all his vehicles are too old.
But I mean, like, would that be something to consider? Like if you did buy them, to put them like, to keep the cost out of the future or have a, every year you knew what exactly you had to pay like for?
Well, I mean, that, you've got to start somewhere and that is a good idea. And it might work if we started right now with the.
Get over the hump.
With the new units or whatever we can afford to come up with if we started with that. But you know, you can't put six figures on the odometer and get a good price. You got to give them credit. Those police people take as good a care of it as they can, those things.
I think it's funny that the two thousand and six is still chugging along.
What, Sheriff, you may know, what is like Dodge Durangos, Tahos? Is that the only thing that's usable nowadays?
Four explorers, the Tahos is what we've had here for.
Yeah. I didn't know if they just had like a car, like a police package car.
We've got a couple trucks. There are cars out there, we don't, we don't get cars, they're all easy to get.
On the internet today, there was a dealer that had six twenty-twenty-three brand-new Dodge Chargers for sale, their police equipped. Nobody will buy them because of brand and.
I remember when I was a kid, the city had Dodge K cars. They did, they had a few K cars running around town.
And years ago, when I was a kid, the city got to a real bind and they bought a bunch of used vehicles. And Kim Hawkins was still a city police officer at that. And years ago, when I was a kid, uh, the city got to a real grind and they bought a bunch of used vehicles, and, uh, Kim Hawkins was still a city police officer at that time. And, uh, he was talking about how they were in decent shape, but they didn't last long.
I think the sheriff's department one time too had some Dodge Intrepids, and the brakes would catch on fire in a pursuit, so. Yeah, they had things like that, they just weren't built for it.
Sometimes like, um, like the truck I drive, uh, we got it in point four, and it was a twenty-three, it was a leftovers, but we got it cheap. See, it was a replacement vehicle from one that got totaled in the crash, I got the insurance money, that was all I had to give, all my blood to give. We got, you know, we got a truck, it was a brand-new truck, it was a year old, it was sitting, uh, you know, ten miles on it, we got it for thirty-nine thousand. But there, there are some out there that are a little cheaper, but you like it with forty or forty-one, where you got that, you're not gonna find it.
So I don't know, but. Long term is, we gotta, we gotta look at the, the, the big picture for the county. And how are we going to fund all of these needs, because budgets are going to change significantly, and we've got to provide, or need to provide. You know, everything that we can, would really need a master plan, trying to move forward with, in communication with our partners.
The problem is now, uh, Clinton City probationary patrolman barely makes thirty thousand.
Yeah.
But we pay for him to go to the academy, and as soon as they graduate and they get out on the street, they are passing out resumes, and. Every small town's going through it. It, and it's gonna continue to be, and the problem is when you deal away with public services because there's no revenue realized from it.
That reflects.
You're stabbing yourself in the throat.
Can you, this might be a question for DJ, can you sign a contract that if you pay that. Fee that you set, that they have to stay so long?
You can.
Go ahead, Ron.
I mean, I.
Yeah, I, I don't, we might have done that in the.
They, normally, they stay for at least a year, eighteen months.
We need them at least three years.
Well, you can't make somebody stay for three years if they.
Then they have to reimburse you the cost of.
Now, there is a reimbursement thing in there if they leave too soon.
Yeah.
But most of them, most of them know how to play the game.
It's only a year usually.
But with differences in salary, I don't know that would make a difference to people. I mean, we can't penalize them enough, I guess.
But, but from the budget information that was provided, I'll say last month, we, we know that. Issues are probably going to be coming forward to this council, whether we're here or not, so we really need to. We really need to dive into this, cause we're, this, I'll say is the first request, but there are gonna be probably many more, and it's like, how do we do this?
It's, what's compounding is that, unless I misunderstood, uh, Jason Becker Tilly, was that cities and towns are gonna have to. Basically, I mean, it's no longer an automatic distribution of the lit public safety funds and.
They're gonna be coming to us.
I mean, they, the cities and towns have to actually create their own.
We have two options, we can either create our own, which in the city of Clinton's case would be a maximum of one point two percent. But if the county creates one also, then our citizens are paying two point four percent, but they're only getting the advantage of one point two.
Yeah, he mentioned that, that's how.
And when you've got a workforce of only two thousand sixty-three people, uh, one point two percent. Uh, it's not gonna be what we're getting now with the certified chairs and, uh, public safety.
Right, but I mean, that's the way it's gonna be though, right?
That's the way, I mean, there's gonna be decisions that are going to be made, cause we have the option of either doing our own, or we kind of parry it in with the county and. Who, it'll be a mathematician's nightmare.
What was that workforce number again?
Uh, two thousand sixty-three is the employed population as of twenty twenty-three.
Out of four thousand eight hundred and eighteen.
Well, forty-eight hundred is a total.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, you're less than fifty percent.
So, yeah, well, heck, a lot of us are old and I was retired.
We don't have a budget, so additional appropriation would have to come from someone else in the county, so there would have to be another party involved.
Sheriff.
The sheriff.
Well, I mean, if, if there's not a police department in Clinton, then the sheriff is going to get the calls, so it.
But they don't have enough manpower.
And that's exactly right, and then the sheriff is gonna become to us and say, I need this, I mean, that's the way it rolls. I mean, same way now with the unincorporated communities.
I guess what I should say is, somebody has to come in.
Right.
Besides you.
Well, I will say.
Why? You misspelled my name too, isn't it?
The other, the other side of that is that. Town marshals, they all, I know Fairview went through some tough times trying to figure out how to get cars. They had one car forever, they ended up with the former mayor's car, or it was the E O C car that, uh, Ray drove for quite a while, they ended up with that one. You know, they burned up, broke down, whatnot, and they bought a couple of units, they burned up, and.
Let me look at the enterprise guy on the nineteen, if you want.
But, you know, it, I'm just saying that each town might say, well, I need a new one too.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying that that's what's.
It's what it's shaping up to be.
And it's truly unfortunate that today, that's, you know, municipal police departments can't even get a car, you know, can't afford a car. It's a sign of times, which is pretty negative.
I just wanted, I thought, since you guys have money, I thought I was gonna make my first thought. And I didn't expect, I mean, I wouldn't expect a miracle, I was, but I wanted you to know and be aware.
I don't think, like, it's. So I would encourage you to.
Oh, I.
Meet with those people, talk to commissioners, you've talked to us, I don't know what and how much, but I think this is something we need to continue down the path and see how we. Work through this process, because it's gonna come back to us, whether we're here or not, but we need to kind of work through a flow chart here of how we're gonna handle this in the future, so. I, I appreciate you bringing it to us now so we can start.
Thinking this.
Working through it and have a solution, I mean, today or next year or something, I understand your need.
I appreciate very much your time, thank you all very much.
Thank you for being patient, waiting.
I heard you're doing an awesome job.
Beg your pardon.
I heard you're doing an awesome job.
Keep up the good work.
Well, somebody wrote that on the log map wall, I, I don't know, I think it was my daughter.
If the commissioners said that they would like to purchase three vehicles, would they, would they be county-owned vehicles, loaned, or would they be property of the city? How would that work?
I think you're better off, insurance-wise, to just gift them or give them the money to do it, so that way they're not on our insurance.
Yeah.
But I don't know how that works with the enterprise thing, if they, if we have to own them all or not. Something we can look into.
Sheriff, you say your cars are all in good shape, it's.
No, uh. We, we have some, we have three more cycling out there.
Yeah, that's what I heard you say.
We're getting three, three more.
Well, I guess, um, I didn't know if maybe the sheriff's department had three vehicles that were low mileage that were nice, and we could buy three new sheriff's cars and, you know, donate those or something with their twenty thousand miles, or I don't know, I'm just.
Well, that's, that's it, kinda like with the highway trucks we've done in the past, we kinda rotated them in and out, and I know we're doing that with the sheriff's car. Maybe in the future, that's something we rotate them out sooner, and then that makes them available to the other communities.
The city may not put as many miles as counties, so.
Not if it's thirty-five or whatever.
Sheriff's car, you know, if you got rid of a sheriff's car at fifty thousand miles, it may last the city many more years, but say a sheriff's car would only last a few years at that point.
Makes sense.
That's it, we just gotta figure out.
Well, the sheriff's cars do travel the gravel road, and the hot hole road more so than the city, and they probably get a little bit more suspension issues. But stuff like what you just said, you know, fifty thousand or sixty thousand in farm amount, now that could possibly work real easily, but if you'll notice on that. Statistic, we've got three vehicles that are still in service that are on six figures on the odometer, one of them is questionable because it's a Dodge Ram. Similar to the one that needs a new motor for ten thousand dollars. But the other two, um, one of them still works, just nothing to cost you much to drive it. Unless you're home from by final, then I just, I said, back, but. There are, I mean, there's things that could be done, maybe if we weren't having to do mutual aid, I don't know that would be necessary to have police interceptors. But when the sheriff calls, you know, and hey, everybody's up in the north end and there's something going on in San Bernardino, we can get there, you know, if our guy is one of them, he's one of them.
Yeah, and I, I can attest to that, I mean, I, I live in Fairview, and I mean, I can attest that the city police have responded to Fairview thousands of times in the past, not necessarily that, you know, that a marshal didn't respond, it was just timing. That's highway, especially like a sixty-three, there's a wreck out there, they're out, they're first ones there, I mean, it's just the way it is, Walmart, you name it.
I mean, municipalities and incorporated are va- valuable assets for the sheriff's department.
I mean. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to think of ways that, you know, if the county purchased newer cars more frequently, if it would be advantageous to roll those down to. I think it's something if they're capable of it, if, you know, I've rode in a sheriff's car once that had a hundred and twenty thousand miles, I wasn't arrested, too, by the way.
You were in the backseat.
We weren't playing around, I was actually going to a call, they needed some help from the fire department, anyway, we were going a hundred and twenty miles an hour, tired as a ball, it was not fun. Want to do that no more.
We'll work on that. All right, that is the end of new business, any other public comments this evening? Pretty much lost our grab. Um, I will say one thing, you guys have on the desk, um, in the assessor, she's asking if we can change our appointments. So that way it not, the whole board, the P D board's not all replaced at one time, um, commissioners could be, do their appointments an even number, council did theirs an odd, think that over, I don't think that's a big deal, but. Make sure you saw, make sure you saw that.
It makes it easier.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense not to have everybody gone one year.
So we just hold off on an appointment?
Well, ours would be odd, she's asking, so we would do ours, the commissioners would hold off this year on there too, so. I don't think we, you may have a problem with that.
I don't.
Yep, okay, all right.
Actually, I got one more thing.
Uh-oh.
One we didn't have ready.
Oh.
Ready for you.
Okay.
Discuss and argue what I'll do, but.
Um, that, this would be the salary resolution for the highway foreman and the highway administrative assistant, so it would move the highway foreman to twenty-four, twenty-seven. And hourly rate and the administrative assistant to twenty-one, sixty-three. Twenty-one, sixty-three? Let's see what you have here, I got it. Yeah, right on.
What do you have, Ash?
Um, he went ahead and typed up the.
Amendment salary resolution.
So that way it could be approved tonight so they could start the payroll, so they wouldn't have to.
Can we entertain that tonight?
Good.
Without being on the gym there.
Well.
Well, it's supposed to be what the other papers are, they're done, but we didn't have it ready, so.
Yeah. I know there was talk about waiting until like the documents were done, you do the registration, but I mean, it's up to you guys.
I'm confused on this here.
Um, because it's less than that this year, I think.
Instead of getting to your full amount, right now they're wanting to wait till January to get your full amount.
I mean, we said we would back pay that once, we gotta read the job description there. That's what, I mean, I thought RJ was fine with that, Commissioner.
Well, I mean, this would be in the budget for twenty twenty-six.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, we can backdate it on, at the next meeting if, that way everyone sees.
Yeah, as far as the pay, yeah, they can, they can be retropaid.
At least we have it ready to go.
I mean, tonight we transferred money, it's sitting there, once we see the plan, then the salary orders can be changed, that's what I thought the procedure would be, so. And I think, I mean, I thought I was clear on that, but I think RJ agreed.
No.
If I'm wrong.
That's fine, well, it's ready to go when, I don't know, thank you, Ron.
Yep.
All right, anything else? Listen to our journal, if you might.
Listen to the journal.
A second.